Well, good evening. Sorry for our late start. It is 7:25 and we'll start the open session of the Board of Selectment meeting. All members are present. Again, apologize for the late delay. We were in an executive session for purposes of discussing collective bargaining with the Newland Police Benevolent Association. I have a hard time with that one. Local 13. If I could ask all members present to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a set of Treasury warrants to approve, 44, 44A, 45, and 45A. Do I have a motion?
Two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Minutes from March 27th Board of Selectment meeting. I would accept a motion to approve those.
Motion still made?
Second.
Motion's made and second. Any discussion on those minutes? I see none. All in favor?
None abstain.
Yes. Four in favor, one abstain. Thank you. Our seven o'clock scheduled appointment, again, I'm sorry Valerie for being late, is with Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation. And Valerie is going to be discussing the town's strategy with regards to affordable housing and creative zoning associated with it. Valerie, I'm very excited and I have been looking forward to your presentation on this subject matter, so I will stop yapping and allow you to take over the floor.
Thank you. Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning. Tonight with me Liz Rust. She's a housing expert and she is out of the Housing Office out of Concord. She's also a consultant for our regional housing services office that's run out of Reading. We share that office with Reading, North Reading, and Saugus. So she's here tonight to give us a lot of information and we're going to run through a couple things. First, starting with our affordable housing status today. We're going to look at our forecast for 2020 when the new census is taken. And then we're going to discuss strategies for moving forward. And to start, I'm going to have Liz sort of go through where we are today and give us some background, defining some terms and giving a context.
Thank you Valerie. Can, do I need to be closer to this or is this?
Okay.
Okay for us.
Okay. I think that Valerie gave you this housing strategy document beforehand which has a lot of information. As she mentioned, my name's Elizabeth Rust, so I do affordable housing consulting, really with a specialization for municipalities. So I do that out of Concord, supporting seven towns, and I also help with the regional group that you're part of here. So I've done a lot of this kind of work before and especially as a result relates to what we call the subsidized housing inventory, which is the counting towards the 10 percent. I think most people are familiar with the 10 percent threshold. So that is, as I say, subsidized housing inventory. It's maintained by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And if you are above the 10 percent, you are able to deny housing developments that don't meet your local zoning because you've met your regional need. And if you're below the 10 percent, you can't use your local zoning. You, developers can propose developments that go against your local zoning and you can't use your local zoning to deny them, if I can say it that way. So the 10 percent is a, you know, it's a percent, so you have a numerator and a denominator. The numerator are the number of affordable housing units that you have in town according to their accounting methodology, which is a little complex, but it's basically the number of affordable housing you have in town. Rental development, if it meets certain criteria, you're able to count all of the units towards your numerator. And on the denominator is the census that's updated every 10 years. So Wilmington is over the 10 percent and it uses the 2010 census as the denominator. And as we look to 2020, as we've worked together with Valerie, that Wilmington projects to be below the 10 percent based on the housing growth over the last seven years. So increases in the numerator greater than increases, I mean increases in the denominator greater than increases in the numerator. So I'm just going to stop there. Does that all make sense?
What, what?
Please.
Yeah, go ahead. It's kind of complicated, technical stuff.
I know a lot about the 10 percent. I was on the Board of Appeals for a long time. I pretty much voted in, not voted for, but was part of every apartment complex in the town, starting at Regency Place, the Metro and the Avalon. I came in after the Avalons, but what percentage will we be in 2020?
Okay.
So I think we're going to.
Want to jump to that?
Yep.
So this is just a list of our current projects that count on our subsidized housing inventory, a bunch of those apartment complexes and some home ownership units. So we're at 810 currently.
Let's just.
Now, the point, the point here is with the homeowner rehab, and I'll get to that, but the homeowner rehab units that you see at the bottom of that chart, 54, those were 15-year terms and that was about 15 years ago. So those are dropping off every year and those units will be expired and not on the list by 2020, 2022, right about there. They can jump off the list anytime someone pays back the loan. So, you know, tomorrow all, everyone could come in and kind of pay off their loan and all of those units are off of our list. So for our projections forward, we assume that those 54 units are gone because they're all expiring. So we still have all of our ownership units and all of our rental units, the housing authority, and then our group homes. And let me just get to this chart, which is your question, 2020 forecast. So we will have a new denominator, which is the total number of units we have in town, total housing units, no matter whether they're affordable or not. That's, that number comes from the census, but we've tried to project that. And the way we did that was we took actual numbers that you see at the top of the chart from 2010 to 2016. I got numbers from the Building Department for building permits every year for net new dwellings. So that includes, does not include if you tear a house down and put one back, because that's just one and one. You're not going to, no new units there. But where you're creating a new unit, where you're tearing down one unit and putting, you know, doing a subdivision and creating two units, you're getting one more unit. So we looked at how many units have we added in the past six years, actual numbers. And those numbers are there across the, in bold, across the middle of that chart, actual numbers. It ranges from 15 in 2012 all the way up to 71 in 2015. So we have those numbers. We just have to sort of project for 2017 to 2020. So one way to do that would be to do the average, right? So the average there is, is 28.29. But since there was such a large range between the 15 and the 71, I felt like we should maybe have a little bit of a buffer on that average. So we ran, I also ran the number with, just using kind of a conservative unit per year number of 40. But as you can see, in both of those cases, our percentages is, both, both of those are below 10 percent, one being 9.33 and 9.28.
So you're saying in 12 is 15, 13, 17, 14, 17, and 16, 17, we had an anomaly in 15 of 71, so you're going up to 40? That seems awfully high to me.
Yeah.
I think it should be more like maybe 20.
Yeah, well, we looked at, also looked at the projects that we've been approving through the Planning Board, some larger subdivisions that are doing significant phases. Murray Hill subdivision, Garden of Eden is coming in for, they'll be coming in for building permits soon. Some of the areas have been, the area along Lowell Street is being rezoned to allow multifamily, so that could create a few units there.
But that could be units for affordability or over 55, correct?
We don't currently have a requirement for affordable units except for in the over 55 overlay.
Okay. And does that count towards the numerator?
The requirement for over 55 overlay is 10 percent of the units. So basically you'd just be keeping, you'd be canceling it out, I guess.
But it counts towards the numerator?
Yes, it would.
Okay. And you're not including that?
I'm not.
And you're not including that on Lowell Street or on, or on 129 or, or out on Andover yet?
The only area that's zoned for over 55 is the, that one project on Andover Street.
But you did a rezoning on Lowell Street?
Right. That was for multifamily, multifamily, but not with the requirement for affordable. So that was neighborhood mixed use, which doesn't require affordable.
But just affordable doesn't mean that it doesn't count towards the numerator?
Yeah, only affordable units would count towards the numerator.
Okay.
Yep. So in the case of the project on Andover Street, it would be three units of the 27 would be affordable. So it's sort of maintaining that 10 percent doesn't make your numbers jump up to add to, when you're below the 10 percent, it doesn't help you out as much. So that's sort of, and on the right side is the, the number of units roughly that would be, you know, ballpark of what you would need to add to get to that 10 percent, which is around, you know, 50 or 60.
Valerie, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It got into my head from Mr. Kyra's questions. The Andover Street project, three of those units will be affordable? Is that, do, do the, does the entire project get counted towards just those three units? Okay.
Yeah, so it's different for ownership versus rental. For ownership, only the units that are affordable count towards the list. For rental projects like Avalon, if 25 percent of those units are affordable, all of the units count.
All right.
And that's the interesting math that happens.
And that's where my head was and that's what I was thinking. I think I was thinking of that when I asked the question, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that didn't happen when Regency was put in effect, but when Metro was, the Board of Appeals was excited to hear that if more than, if 25 percent of them were affordable apartments, then 108 units were counted towards the, and that's what could ultimately get us over the 10 percent at the time.
Thank you.
And we should probably also, when we talk about affordable, what that means, the state counts units on the SHI, and you should correct me if I, units can be counted if they're affordable to families making 80 percent of the area median income. So, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be affordable to everyone, but that's sort of the threshold where you can start counting those units, is 80 percent AMI. And the AMI for a household of two.
It's on the back here if you're, if she's here.
AMI for a household of two is 62,550. That's the 80 percent number. So a family making that for their household of two would be at 80 percent. And there's a chart that has those numbers for your reference. So anything at 80 percent or 60 or lower than that is going to be counted on your, your inventory. So I'm going to move on for now. We can always go back. Okay. So knowing this, knowing that we're going to fall below the 10 percent, we have, the town has.
Can I just mention one thing before we go forward on the, on the counting of the 10 percent? So units are counted, if you, if you're creating these units through a 40B permit, when the zoning board issues the permits, they could count. You have to have a building permit within 12 months, otherwise you'll lose them. And then an occupancy permit in 18 months or you'll lose them. And so units that are created not through the 40B, you wait to occupancy permit. So as you're thinking about projects that might be going on or in discussion, it takes usually some number of years before we're talking about it to when they're actually recorded on the subsidized housing inventory through occupancy permits. So the lead time and timeline is really quite long, always a little bit longer than you hope and you think.
She reminds me of this all the time. So options going forward, there's really kind of two ways to go for the town. One would be no action, fall below the 10 percent in 2020 and have the 40B projects, comprehensive permits, be able to start coming in in 2020 for those types of projects until we reach that 10 percent. The other option would be to create units by 2020 or soon after. And I'm going to go through each of those in a little bit more detail. We can talk through those. So no action, 40B developments, as Ed knows really well, the approval is through the Board of Appeals. Those projects are not subject to local zoning, so they have additional density, additional height. And really the reason, if you're providing affordable units, you have to offset that cost, right? Because you're not getting the return, as much return on those units as you would on market rate units. So you're going to add units to the overall project. And then projects would be reviewed and approved until we reach that 10 percent. And as we talked about before, it depends on the timing for that and, and how that works depends on the types of projects that come in. Rental projects with a large affordable component, you know, could get us a bunch of units, but if they're ownership units, then only those exact affordable units go on the list. So many more ownership units before we would hit that 10 percent, if that makes sense. Anything to add about 40B development or any questions about?
Now, in my experience with towns, it means some 40B projects fit well with the town. They're in appropriate parcels and the developer is willing to work with the town. And other 40B projects are not appropriate compared, you know, from the town's perspective. So it's hard to know whether, you know, the 40B is going to work for you or not work for you. Sometimes, you know, they're not always bad, but sometime, you don't have the law on your side in your negotiations. So it really depends.
Yeah, so just in terms of the no action scenario, no action meaning that the town is not taking affirmative steps to try to encourage affordable units. In the absence of the town facilitating that, is it fair to say that as the number of homes are, as homes are added to the inventory, so to speak, with that denominator increasing, it only stands to reason that the, the number is going to diminish, the percentage of affordable units, whether it magically happens as of 2020 or whether it happens in 2021 or 2022. But in the absence of taking any affirmative action to facilitate affordable units, the mere expansion of the universe of homes will decrease that rate?
Right. The state only changes the denominator once every 10 years. So even as you're creating units every month or, or every year as you go, they're only going to recognize that once every 10 years. And once they create that denominator, they don't change it till the next 10 years.
And has it been your experience, well, let me ask, I guess, what is your experience in terms of the generation of affordable housing, whether it's in the form of single family homes or apartments in the absence of the town trying to facilitate that? I mean, is it part of the regular, if we allow the market, so to speak, to just do its thing, will this happen naturally without the town?
That's what I said. Sometimes you don't, I don't know about the 40B, the attractiveness of parcels in your town. If you're looking to create 60 numerator units, right, as we looked at before, so that's some sizable kind of rental project, like a 60-unit project. If you're looking for one development to kind of get you over that, that 10 percent, you know, what kind of parcels are, are appropriate for that? You know, this is private land, right, mostly? So who wants to sell their land to who? And is it the right place? And what developer would want to work with you to design something that fits into the scale and style of the neighborhood or not? So I, I've seen all, as I say, I've seen the spectrum. But developers, they want to minimize their risk. So, and they, as Valerie said, the, because the 25 percent will be at a lower, they're going to build them at a loss. Like the affordable rents and the affordable prices are below their cost to develop. So they're going to want more market rate units to offset that cost. So they're looking for higher density. They're looking for less risk on the zoning. So it's not really the single-family affordable homes. That doesn't really happen, you know, in terms of detached structures. That would be something that the town would propose, like developers wouldn't really do that on the affordable front.
Yeah.
You said the developer is building an affordable unit at a loss, but on a 40B project, there's a built-in profit that they can only maximize at. So they're making money, right? Am I wrong in saying that? I mean, with Metro, with, with the three that I was involved with, the big ones, there was a maximum profit that the builder could make and that had to be recorded by the DHDC.
Sure, sure. That's part of the, that's part of the requirement. So they're probably putting in five years of their time.
Yeah.
Maybe they're making 15 percent, something like that, but they're probably making between 13 and 17 percent profit over the five years, paying, you know, them and all their, their people and how much time they put in. And yes, they're going to, they're not going to do it for nothing.
Right.
And if it's probably under 10 percent, they'll probably not do it. It's probably not enough, because they take so long. They, they invest so much time and that upfront cost is with some risk. So, but in terms of development costs for the affordable units, what they're getting back in terms of proceeds or rent is less than what the construction cost is.
How many units make up a 40B?
25, it's, there's two parameters, but 25 percent at an 80 percent AMI or 20 percent at a lower AMI. So there's some options, but generally it's 25 percent of the units would have to be offered to the affordable tenants.
You mean project size, Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah. So they can be any size, any.
Metro was 108, West Spring Pines was 48.
Can I have one, just the one house that's 40B development?
Um, well.
Does it have to be 10 units? Does it have to be?
25 percent have to be affordable. So if it's one house, the one unit's going to have to be affordable.
Right.
And the numbers would, would go against that.
Right. So you wouldn't make enough money to build an affordable unit. You wouldn't make enough money on the sale of that affordable unit to pay for what you, your construction costs. So you have to have enough market rate units to offset the cost of the affordable units.
And to build in your, your time and effort, your, as you mentioned before, your profit. Because these are private developers, so they're going to do it for some fee.
Right.
Yeah, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You said you can take no action till 2020 or you could take action before 2020. What?
What are we thinking?
What is the, what agency could force a developer prior to 2020 to take action?
We couldn't force anyone, but that's a great segue to the next piece. So we wouldn't be able to force anyone. We don't have zoning that requires much as far as affordable units. Like I said, the one exception is the over 55 district, which we only have one project that's zoned for that off of Vandover Street that was at town meeting the year before. A small project, 27 units, three of those units would be affordable. That's, that project is before the Planning Board right now for their special permit. So they are proceeding through the process. The rest of town, we have no requirement for affordable units as part of new projects. So we couldn't force it to happen, but we could provide an incentive for it to happen. And there's two, two strategies that sort of work well together. One involving the creation of multi, not multi, single-family homes, family, you know, two, three-bedroom family homes on small town-owned surplus, single lot parcels. We have a lot of small parcels around town that are sort of sitting vacant. Those parcels could be developed into small little single families. The other strategy that goes along with that is something that we could do on town-owned land, which is something we've been talking about for a while, is a larger rental development for seniors or over 55. I use those terms interchangeably, just meaning age restricted to over 55, not necessarily seniors. So I'll go into a little bit more detail on each one of those so that you have an idea of what, what the idea might be. The first strategy, we've identified a handful of single-family lots in our single-family neighborhoods that could be surplused for construction of a small, single-family house. These lots are on sewer. They appear to be buildable after we've done some, a little bit of title work to, to look at the, the history. And you would, the idea would be you group, you know, five parcels together and you put out an RFP for the development of those five parcels, individual parcels in different locations. And each of those parcels, you would have, a developer would build a single-family home. And some of them would be affordable, some of them would be closer to market rate so that it offsets the cost, but it would be a mix of that so that the numbers work out. And you could imagine getting, you know, a few affordable restricted units and some that are, you know, maybe a little bit under market rate. So those smaller parcels that are scattered around, sometimes they're referred to as scattered sites, those could be put back on the tax rolls as small, single-family homes, whether they're affordable or market or somewhere in between. That's meeting a need for more affordable family housing in town, sort of small starter homes for families. And so we don't project a lot of units from that, but it's also something that, that fits into the context of town and creates a public benefit with those units.
Excuse me, those would be, if we went this route, they would be in perpetuity?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yep. And then the second strategy, complementing, you know, more affordable family housing would be to do a larger rental development for over 55. Again, it would be identifying a piece of town-owned land and offering that land as the subsidy and the incentive to, to build a development on that parcel. You could require at least 25 percent affordable so that all of the units count towards the subsidized housing inventory. The process might look something like a town meeting vote to do the over, over 55 overlay so that it would comply with the zoning that we already have. And a vote to surplus and put out an RFP for a private developer to construct and then eventually manage according to the stipulations that are put on that as far as affordability and otherwise. That has a timeline associated with it and that's what Liz always reminds me of, that this is something that takes some time to get started and definitely takes some time to get to occupancy when those units would ultimately count on our inventory. And.
If I may, I'm sorry.
And I want to be respectful of that time period that you're referring to, Ms. Rust. If the property is under construction or if it's been permitted and we know what we're going to build and we know how many are going to be affordable, all that, even though they're not yet occupied, we can't have them count towards our 40B 10 percent?
If it's, if you permit through a 40B, so I don't really know in this scenario with the, with the permitting of that, but let's just say, so they would count when the permit's issued and then you need a building permit within 12 months to keep them counting. And then you need occupancy within 18 months to keep them counted.
Okay.
If you permit them through a special permit, you have to wait till the occupancy permit so you don't get the benefit of the initial permit or the building permit. So.
I'm glad there's planners in the world. Mr. Chairman, West Spring Pines was developed, there was a huge delay and that hurt our numbers for a brief period of time until the second building was finally built. And then that developer, original developer, agreed to do 30 percent. And then because he couldn't get it built in time, the new developer came in and got it reduced back down to the 25 percent. So the town, go ahead.
No, just to refresh, I mean, didn't the developer, I mean, I remember voting on that. Didn't the developer came before the board, like we gave a special waiver?
Didn't the developer came before the board, like we gave a special waiver, not only over 55, that he could sell the second building to even people under 55?
Yeah, that was also in front of the Board of Appeals and they allowed two apartments per building to go to people under 55.
Because I think that's what, I think that's what ended up selling the properties there because it was the Board of Sluckman, and I remember making the vote in favor to allow that developer to bring it down from over 55. And can I just ask a question while we're talking? Now, I'm just trying to understand, we're talking a moment ago, over 55, then you had a slash, say, senior citizen, or senior. If you could go back to the previous one. It says over 55 slashed and senior. Have we ever really determined what is the senior age? Because I'm over 55 and then I should say, well, jeez, I should be able to get a deal and buy it. I've got two kids and shouldn't be an issue. But what, aren't we going to try to cater to somebody who's a senior citizen that's over 55? Have we determined, we need to determine an age. Is it 62, 65, 68? I mean, when you collect social security, you can collect it, what, at age 62, I believe, earlier, but you get penalized as opposed to 65 and beyond. Is there an age that we're going to take a look at down the road?
So I can say from the housing program perspective, for chapter 40B, age-restricted housing, it's 55. You can choose to be different. For public housing, it's 62, and HUD has some programs that are 65. So some of it might relate to what kind of funding that you're going to get. If you're not getting any state or public funding, the state would require in order for you to be age-restricted, 55.
And that's what our zoning is, is 55. So that's why I kind of use them together because the minimum would be 55, according to our zoning. And loosely, it's all just age-restricted, whatever, you know, range around that number is settled on, but...
So it depends on what programs. You just mentioned HUD. So if it's HUD, then somebody what, age 65, 68 qualified, but you need funding?
That would be if you're getting HUD money.
Right.
So depending on who was the developer and what level of affordability, and are you getting public money or is it a private 40B, you know, kind of profile, you'd have some, some differences.
And I think those are programs worthwhile that we need to explore. And I know we sat down and the manager, we talked about that. You know, obviously somebody's not over, I'm over 55, so I could be able to get into a place like that. But what about somebody 65, 68? So there's different categories. So you need different agencies, for example, HUD, the federal government, to basically help with these facilities.
But that doesn't just restrict it to Wilmington residents when you're, when you're talking HUD and...
None of these would be restricted to Wilmington residents.
Right, and people should understand that.
Right.
Because I think that there's a misconception out there that there's going to be affordable housing where the residents can go into, and that's not necessarily true.
So the state would allow what they call local preference for up to 70% of the units if properly requested and justified by the community? So you have to request that, but they won't allow more than 70% rounded down of the units for, to be reserved and initial occupancy only.
Well, I'm glad that's being cleared. Because I think that there's a misconception out there.
There's always a lot of questions around that.
That a lot of the residents are feeling, you know, what's your position on senior housing? We all want to go in there and that's not going to happen.
But you push to 70%. That's what you're trying to do and that's what you really need to accomplish. Because you can't take nothing, nothing, we shouldn't take anything less than 70% if we're going to be doing these things.
Right.
Yeah. But you may have to.
Well, you try the 70%.
You're allowed to reserve 70% for...
But you may have to take less than 70% if you have to meet those requirements within a certain timeframe.
I don't think so.
If you're trying to rent up, if you have 50 units and you're trying to rent them up and you're saying, you're setting aside 70% and there aren't 70% of the units with Wilmington residents, you're going to take anyone who qualifies to go into those units as the property manager versus hold them vacant, waiting for the Wilmington resident. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah. So I, I think that would be a discussion with the developer that you could request that they hold them. I don't, I don't know what you'd give them in return.
Obviously you don't want to see them vacant. I understand that completely. I get that, but if we're able to get 70% of preference of residents, that's what you strive for, you know?
And something that has to do with marketing and outreach and lead time so that people are prepared. They know what's coming and they're waiting for it so that you have a greater demand once the, once you've opened up the marketing and are accepting applications.
If we're saying that we're going to double the senior age in 10 years, then I would sure as think that Wilmington residents, when you give them preference, is going to be now double that amount in 10 years. You know, so we're going to be looking at, well, well before 2030, you know, in, in that timeframe, you know, so. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How about apartments added on to homes for the seniors? Does that count towards the 10%?
So I think you're talking about accessory apartments?
Yeah.
Do you have an accessory apartment, Viva?
We do.
Is that factored into your...
Into the denominator, but not the numerator. So they don't, they're not...
So it should be, though.
No, they're not restricted in any way. Our accessory apartments don't have any restrictions as far as affordability. So they wouldn't be counted towards our...
One of the difficulties with this...
But it could be.
One of the difficulties with...
If they're seniors living in those apartments.
They would have to be deed restricted. So they would have to place a restriction on the deed that...
Up to 15 years.
Okay, you have 15 years that the person living there, you would have to have them income certified so that they're not making, so that they qualify for the affordable unit.
The other, the other part that makes the accessory apartments difficult to count towards your numerator and the other part of the DHCD counting requirements are that the units are marketed to their affirmative fair housing marketing standards, which is, I don't, you know, if you've heard of housing lotteries where people go and apply. And so that's part of that process, that it's open, anyone can apply and it's, it's random that you can pick if you're eligible. When you have an accessory apartment, people want to pick who, who's going to live there. They don't want a lottery to figure out who's going to be living in their accessory apartment. So that's generally a practical barrier for most communities that I know of to work on their accessory apartments, to have them count on their numerator.
You're also accepting less for rent than you would market rate. So it's, there's sort of a disincentive for, for restricting it in some ways.
Mr. Chair, Valerie, are we going to be eligible for, say, a project like this was to come about? Would we even be eligible for some of the state aid because we have the housing authority already?
So a developer, and you can probably speak to this better, but a developer could apply for state funding. We wouldn't, we wouldn't apply for, we would probably leave it to private development to apply for that funding, build the, the project. And the housing authority is a separate entity.
So I'm suggesting it's unlikely that a developer could get state aid. If the housing authority has a hard time getting state aid, how is a private developer going to get state aid?
It's different pots of money. The, the housing authority operating funds versus the, the funding here. These are mostly low-income housing tax credit funding that, that developers apply for. For age-restricted housing, they, the, the application would need to have more than 25% affordable units. So age-restricted would be usually like if the entire project, like all the units would be restricted in terms of income. Those would be, that would be what the state would be looking for as a requirement for public financing. So versus here, this would be like versus item three, which is require at least 25% to be affordable. So if you wanted state financing, you would have probably 100% of the units to be affordable. And that's like the, like the housing authority units where all the units are affordable. So they don't have a market component to them.
So the, the facility master plan process has been looking at, as directed by town meeting, has been looking at a couple parcels for suitability for a project like this. And two parcels have sort of come to the top of the list. One being the, the parcel next to St. Dorothy's on Main Street and backing onto Glen Road. And that parcel is over seven acres. It's on sewer. It would meet the requirements for rezoning to over 55 district. And the location is close to shopping. It's on the regional bus route that runs up Main Street and down to Market Basket Train Station up to Lowell. The other site, I should mention that that parcel, as it's vacant now, would be something that could be started sooner rather than later. The other parcel is this parcel that we're sitting here on. Town Hall, 19 acres on sewer. It would also meet the requirements for the rezoning to over 55. We'd have to figure out how to subdivide the parcel so that the town keeps the playing fields while the, the front part is available for development. Feedback so far is, has been that, not surprising actually, the active use of the fields, specifically Sunday morning football, might not be compatible with, with housing, which is understandable. But these are two parcels that, that could be candidates for this type of project.
How many units would you get out of the first, St. Dorothy and then Town Hall?
St. Dorothy, you could get about 70 units. Town Hall, we would have to figure out probably a similar size once we subdivide it. And that would be with our, our local over 55 zoning. You could do something different if you went the 40B route for permitting.
So in reality, if we did either one of these, it would give us relief for up to 10 years because the next census after 2020 is 2030. We could be in the same situation in 10 years or less.
And that's a perfect segue to the next slide.
Well, look like I read this.
So a couple other strategies. One of them is just sort of a, if we get the opportunity, if we have, if we happen to have foreclosure units, we could repurpose them as affordable units, put them out for rehab if necessary and resale as an affordable unit. But the second item here is inclusionary zoning, which we could consider in the long term, which is just the idea of writing into your zoning code a requirement for 10% of your housing project to be affordable. So once you get to that 10%, you're, as you're adding projects, those projects aren't hurting you. They're just keeping that 10% going because they themselves are providing 10%. An example would be Burlington. They require a project of four units or more to provide affordable housing. And it's roughly 10% of the project has to be affordable.
And I think that Burlington, I'm sorry. I think Burlington, which is one of the communities that I support through my, my efforts, are, are talking about even raising it from 10% in their inclusionary zoning to higher. I think they're discussing 12% or up to 15% to pick up, you know, where smaller development occurs and they're not able to get an affordable component, that the larger projects can pick up that, that difference.
And this type of requirement, you could couple it, I know the development community probably, you know, they don't want to have to build affordable units because they don't get as much money for them. But you could couple it with an increase in density, specifically in certain districts, like the neighborhood mixed-use district. If you increase the density to, from 10 units per acre to 12 and then had an affordable requirement on top of that so that you're sort of providing more density but requiring that density to be affordable. So there's creative ways that you can kind of do the math for that and something that we might want to consider moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, it would seem to me that if we're looking to avoid the situation that we may be finding ourselves in now, which is that we're in danger of going below 10% and the only way to remedy that, or one of the few ways to remedy that is to identify a large parcel or, and, and develop it for apartments to get a big hit, so to speak. The, the way to avoid that kind of, putting ourselves in that situation is to have an inclusionary element so that we're keeping pace as development continues.
Right. That would be the idea, so that you get to that 10% and then you keep maintaining it so you don't have to figure something out when the next census comes around.
So how long has Burlington had that inclusion area? Has it been many years?
Longer than I've been working with them, which has been four years, so I know before then. And they've, they've created a, a bunch of units through then, yeah.
Forgive me, I need some, some additional clarification on the inclusionary zoning. So the hypothetical in my brain, and maybe I'm too simplistic, is a developer has a tract of land and he wants to build 10 houses. One of them has to be affordable, that's 10%. But you're talking about four units and one of, I, I got confused.
Well, projects of really small projects, like three units, you may not want to require...
What's a unit, if I may ask? Are you talking about a building or a, like each unit is a building or a building that has four apartments in it?
Apartments or houses or, you know, one family lives in...
A unit is a residence.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you have three units, you probably, it's, it's a, it's a little much to ask for one of those to be affordable. So there's sort of a, a certain threshold where you start requiring the affordable units. And a lot of times that's, you know, it's a range between Burlington's four or some are higher at 10, 10 units. You have to do the one, but anything under 10 is, is, doesn't require it.
Okay.
So it's just sort of figuring out where you want to be, whether you want to be safer or, or just do truly 10%.
Okay, thank you.
And some communities also provide, you know, as you get into that kind of zoning, an option where a developer can buy out of the requirement. So you'd have a cash option for the developer. So as you get into it, you know, there's some, some additional nuances.
Thank you.
Mr. McCray?
Yeah, thank you. Just want to see where we're going with that. You know, we're talking about, like we just mentioned a moment ago, 10 units an acre. Then maybe we could up it to 12 units an acre to give affordable. I don't want to think, I don't, I hope to think we're not going to do cluster development in this community. Need to really take a look. On an R60 zone, you can put one house. And I know right now, what is it, an acre, what, 48,000 square feet? Is that what an acre is? Forty, well, less than 48. So we're talking putting 10 units on 43,000 square feet. Now we're talking about maybe, well, to get 10%, we put 12 units. I mean, I don't think we want to turn town Wilmington into a city. We really need to take a really good look on what we're doing. We actually changed some zone, which I did vote for. I would love to see some of these complexes get built so we can get a feel on what it's going to look like. But once again, we're talking 10 units on 43,000 square feet where in most of the town, we had R20 zone, I would say, you got some R60, where one house is on R60. We're going to take a look in the character of this community too. Where are we going to go with this? You know, once again, I'd love to see these developments that I supported be built so we can get a snapshot of what it's going to look like. I know we can go into neighboring communities and take a really good look if you really want to, but you know, I'd like to give, you know, at least an opportunity to see what they're going to look like. And then we can make a decision if we really want to go more than 10 acre, I mean, 10 per acre. People might say after seeing them, say, hey, we should go less than 10 an acre. I mean, you're going to see that. You're going to see people say that, you are, you know? So, you know, I'd love to see what we can come up with, but really got to take a good, high look before we go above and beyond.
Yeah.
We might have to go a little bit less than 10 once we start seeing what's happening here.
Yeah, I think Burlington doesn't, doesn't restrict it to an acre. So they're really talking about the whole project of 12% of the units to be affordable, but it could be a project that's on 10 acres or 12 acres, you know? So there might be a larger development over that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say, I would love to see what other communities, I mean, you would know better than myself, Valerie. Like, like say Tewksbury or Burlington, what do they have per acre? Do they got two units an acre or do they got 20 units an acre? I mean, I would love to see what other communities have. We don't have to copycat them. Maybe they'll say, wow, Wilmington's got 10, we only got six. Maybe we should do what Wilmington does. But we really don't want to look at that cluster development, turning this place into a city now. You know, that's, we got to start looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, our, the town is mostly single-family. Like you said, R20, there's a lot of R20, there's some R60. But overall Wilmington's a very single-family, single-family lot-style town. I don't think that's what we would want to be changing. I think that, like you saw with the, the new district last year, taking kind of a general business district and, and adding a special permit for multifamily in, in the right places only. So we do have to be thoughtful about where we're, we're putting things and keeping the character of the town. And that was, it was, it was truly an example of what we could consider, but it would definitely need to be talked about in detail.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So I wanted to give this overview tonight as context for the overall conversation, ongoing conversations about the facility master plan so that there's sort of this sort of context in mind while we're looking at that. It's, it's something that I'll be looking for direction on, I guess. And I think that these types of strategies, we can meet multiple goals in the town for providing different types of housing and providing affordable housing and housing that fits into the context of, of town. Whereas a 40B project, you know, is, it's hard to fit that into, into the town's context. So I would, I would recommend to the board a proactive approach, um, towards this subject. And, um, we'll be willing to answer any additional questions or comments.
Thank you, thank you both. Um, there's a lot of meat on this bone. Um, I'm just going to chime in quickly here, um, and then I'll certainly go out to the board. Um, there's priorities here that have already been indicated by, uh, the population of this town at last year's town meeting. Which is a focus on making sure we can, uh, accommodate our senior citizens in town. And so, you know, these are actionable steps that you've highlighted. That is one piece in that picture of, uh, creating a, a diverse housing stock. That senior citizens would have access to, whether it's by virtue of it being, um, market rate, smaller cottage-type of buildings. Or affordable housing. So I'm, I'm pleased that we're, we're continuing to be mindful of our senior citizens in Wilmington. At the same time, I'm also cognizant of what Mr. McCoy alluded to. And that's this notion of, of, you know, uh, population density and housing density. And I don't know, I've, I've heard the term used sprawl in the past, um, where, you know, I, Wilmington has character. Uh, by virtue of how we've evolved over the course of the last couple of centuries. And that character is, I think, near and dear to everybody's heart, those of us that live here. And the concern is that that character and, and the identity that we hold dear, um, becomes sacrificed by virtue of. Uh, large, complex, uh, apartment facilities. And I, I don't want to say n- negative things about those kind of facilities because I understand they have a value and merit. And serve that first purpose of accommodating senior citizens and people with lower incomes. But we also want to be cognizant of not cookie-cuttering out, I think, a, a large number of those. Uh, and in, in so doing, end up changing who we are as, as a population. So, and I don't have answers, I'm, I'm not, these aren't even really questions, they're just observations and where my head goes. Um, but at the same time, all of that being said. This idea of forty-B and a developer potentially, um, being able to dictate to the town. What kind of product or what kind of development we end up getting without our, uh, without our, I don't want to say our control, but I'll, I'll say it. Um, I, if we're going to get development in, in this town, I want the town to have a say as to what kind of development that is. And I don't want it forced down our throats by virtue of us falling underneath ten percent and being subject to a forty-B, uh, development. So, we have to take action steps to keep our ten percent quota. So that we can interject, interact with zoning and planning and, and, and control the kind of development that we're going to have. Because the fact is, we're going to have development, so, um, it's, it's not a question. It's, those are my comments and the observations that I took from your presentation. Um, you have my commitment from my seat that, um, we will stay committed. And, and if you're asking us for a direction this evening, uh, you know, you'll probably get it organically from each of us individually. Um, but we're, I'm going to ask you for, uh, a continued understanding and, and maybe come back to us at some date when there's actual presentations. My personal feeling is, um, if you're, if we were looking to act on one of those two proposals. Whether it's the Glen Road facility or the, the, um, uh, I'll call it the Saint Dorothy's location. The Saint Dorothy's location, in my opinion, is ten times more appropriate for that use than this location. Um, so, uh, that's just kind of my, my informal vote on the subject, but I've said enough. Um, so I'll please, I don't know, I'm do, I'll, I'll, I'll go, uh, Mr. McCoy, you want to go first?
I just like to touch upon with the chairman's, and I agree with them. You know, I've been on the board for a while, I remember years ago, running for selectman, I said, I wouldn't want to turn our community into another Everett or Rivera. I'm hoping that we develop this right. I don't want to turn our community into what, Burlington or Boricca. Times have changed a little bit, and I do agree, and once again, I voted at the previous town meetings to support Lowell Streets, to support our Main Street. I supported Mr. Wright's, uh, thing. I would love to see these built and see what we look at. And I know sometimes when you come up with creative zoning, you need to do certain things. I don't want to be too creative where we're just doing cluster development in this community. And then five, six years from now, we're going to be, uh, you know, once we start, you know, I'm not a, you know, let's see, how can I say this? Uh, I don't say I know everything, but if you take a look and we start building a lot of units and we're charging, I don't know what the price is going to be. Obviously, the value of a home's going to go up, but that's great if somebody wants to sell their home. And where are they going to go? They're going to make a profit because the value of your house grow up because you're going to have hundreds and hundreds of units. I voted to allow a hundred to two hundred units and e- with the potential even more on Lowell Street. What I'm saying is, what about people, I don't think we should be trying to penalize people who want to stay in this town. Could, you know, taxes is going to start to go up and up. We start having cluster development, all this, it's going to be a value to that, I'd like to see what they're going to charge. And I supported the over fifty-five over industry, I don't know what they're going to be, four hundred, five hundred thousand? I don't know what they're going to cost, but I'm hoping that we take a look at this and we don't price this folks out of Wilmington to move out. Where are they going to go? You're going to go what, Drake it, Southern New Hampshire? You're still going to pay a capital gains and you're not going to be twenty miles away from where you want to be. We got to be very careful in how we do this, let's not give the shop away. Could do this right, I voted for every single one at the town meeting. I want to see these developed, see what they look like before we start being too creative, you know? I don't want to turn this community into another Burlington. And years ago, I said Everett Rivera, now I'm looking Burlington Boricca. You know, I think people want that hometown feel, and I do agree with the chairman, want to keep it a nice hometown feel. Everyone's going to make a buck, believe me, ten units on one acre, what is that going to cost? See, somebody paid an acre, what, four, five hundred thousand, which you couldn't sell a lot today? What's that, forty, fifty thousand dollars per unit times ten? Uh, it looks like a lot of profit margin to be on that, if you look at it that way. You know, so we got to be very careful what we do, and I know we're, we're in its infancy, we haven't seen anything. Let's look at it before we start giving it away to the community away. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Love?
Chairman, I agree with Mr. McCoy and Mr. Shampoo, but I, I have a couple of questions. Apart- apartments above retail, are they part of, are they affordable, are they counted as affordables? Not at all. Okay. I would be in favor of actually all three things, uh, including the site on, um, Main Street, not here. Um, finding the small developments that you, you listed them, Faulkner was one of them and a couple others. And the reason why I say that is, because we have young kids. I have one that's at home, that's twenty-three, that's dying to find a place, but he can't afford Wilmington. His best friend just bought a condo in Lowell. Um, and he sees him a lot. I, I have very much interest in keeping the seniors in town, but we also have to think about the young kids. Um, and the condos that were just, the, the approval that we just had a town meeting was sold to us as. Well, what the developer had said to me was to keep the young kids, his daughter's thirty years old and all her friends are moving out of town because they can't afford to live in town. That's what scares me a lot, is keeping the young kids in town. And if we can add condos like that development on Main Street, which hopefully gets built, like Mr. McCoy said. And Steve Wright's facility gets built up, off of Andover Street for the elderly, uh, the over fifty-five, we need to get these built. He's absolutely right, so we can see what we got. Because whether we like it or not, Mr. McCoy mentioned something at the town meeting that scares the bejesus out of me. And that's, uh, the Exped- Expedex site, Expedex, whatever that site is behind Main Street. What if a developer comes to us and that's probably well over a thousand units, and that would scare everyone in town?
As a forty-B, you mean?
Uh, whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever. Uh, I've been through the forty-B process a lot, um, and it does take a long time. Some were good for the town, like Metro was a good one, in my opinion. Um, that develop came to us for a hundred and sixty-something units at first. The town got it down to a hundred and eight, so they're willing to work with it, because they want it to be built. They want these developments to be built because there's money to be made, but, and, and everything, so. I, I would be in favor of trying the exclusionary, um, bylaw, really looking at that for the future. So not only in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-thirty, twenty, beyond, we can, we can keep them, the update, keep, keep it up, maintained. So we're not forced with a thousand units or something scary like that, or two hundred, mentioned on Lowell Street. And then, um, of course, possibly looking for a senior site on, on Main Street. So, that's what my opinions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Mr. Kyra, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reminded of what Mr. Mc- Mr. McCoy said a while back about land being scarce and it's not growing anymore. And the land we have is the land we have. Um, and I would not be in favor of, uh, developing the Saint Dorothy's parcel or the Glen Road parcel. Because we're land limited, we don't have it and we'll probably end up using it and needing it. But I am in favor of the developments on Lowell Street and Main Street and Andover Street. And seeing where it takes us and what it looks like, and I, and I would agree with, uh, uh, Mr. McCoy and, uh, what he said in that regard. And, and the flavor of the town, as Mr. Shampoo said. So I, I, I would be one who would be opposed right now at this point in time of, of using that Saint Dorothy's parcel or Glen Road parcel. And, and see what comes about with the other developments that are taking place in town.
Mr. Ben?
Thank you. To go last, thank you. Thanks for your presentation, certainly, uh, something that's, uh, very important to all of us. I agree with my colleagues that we, uh, we all share the same concerns about our aging population here in town. As someone, uh, Mr. Loud, who represents that thirty-some-odd population who's trying to stay in town, I, I definitely recognize that. That's me and my peers that are, uh, who grew up here, who are trying to stay here, so I'm cognizant of that as well. Um, the only thing, I, I'm concerned about the, uh, the term affordable that just gets thrown out there. I think Mr. Kyra mentioned it earlier in the evening, that, you know, when I, it's a relative term, right? What I think is affordable is much different than what my father, who was approaching his seventies, thinks is affordable. He, he would probably fall out of his chair if I told him what, you know, one of these projects might cost. And he said, you know, that's not affordable, so, uh, I'm, I'm concerned about the term, you know, that just gets thrown there. I want to make sure whatever we do, we make clear to the residents, uh, what we're, uh, planning to do. And so certainly, I appreciate your efforts because this is going to be a challenge. Um, I do agree we need to get creative, perhaps with zoning. Um, you know, I voted for, I'm also in favor of projects like happening up on Andover Street. Uh, Mr. Wright's project, Mr. Welch's project there on Main Street, those are projects that I like to see. I don't know if I'm prepared to just, uh, give away town land, uh, to start building it without giving some real serious thought to it. And I understand that we have time constraints because we're approaching twenty-twenty, uh, quicker than we all would like. Uh, but I would hate to jam the residents into a situation where they had to vote on something, uh, just in the interest of time. I would hope that we can, hopefully continue your efforts to make sure this is a priority. It's something we can continue to talk about here, uh, as the days go on.
I have a follow-up question, which might be to you, Jeff, or Valerie. It, it's really the mechanism for whatever, whatever movement we take as a town, how does that happen? I mean, the, the Board of Selectmen has some authority, I, I imagine, but it really probably needs to go before an open town meeting body, I imagine, yes?
Yeah, certainly, any effort to, uh, establish an inclusionary, uh, zoning bylaw would require, um, a vote at town meeting. Uh, certainly, uh, I think it would be significant and, uh, to have the Board of Selectmen's endorsement of such a, uh, effort. Uh, and s- it, similar with any sale of town land. It would have to go through the surplus process, which, you know, is well-established. Uh, ultimately get approval at town meeting and, you know, I suspect there again, uh, if something like that were to be pursued and succeed. It would need, uh, the imprimatur of the Board of Selectmen. So that's why, you know, I think we don't have a lot of time, given the fact that these types of projects take years, uh, to, to develop. Um, we need, I, I think, uh, quite frankly, we need to be taking action, uh, at the next annual town meeting, certainly, uh, or sooner.
Well, I mean, or sooner, um, we don't really have the option of, of or sooner, at least un- unless you're just suggesting scheduling a special town meeting for that purpose.
Well, I wouldn't, you know, I, I, I'm not suggesting at this point that we schedule a special town meeting. But if a special town meeting came up for other reasons, I would think that we would look at that as an opportunity.
That's reasonable.
Mr. Chairman, can I say, Jeff, what do you mean, uh, even at the next town meeting, to take what up? What we're proposing?
Uh, well, uh, to take, uh, an inclusionary, uh, bylaw forward, w- w- we need to, in my estimation. If the town wants to avoid the prospect of go- going below ten percent. We can't rely upon just the market system to continue to create affordable units. You know, people who are in the business of development are not in the business of developing affordable units unless there's an enticement to do that. So we need to create more opportunities to entice the development community, uh, to create affordable units. I mean, they, obviously, they're in this to make a, a living and to make a profit. And so, you know, there are certain levers, so to speak, that we can, um, alter to create favorable environment for them to do that. I, I don't believe that the town should be in the business of building and operating, um, public housing. That's not what our core mission is, but we ought to create opportunities for others to create affordable housing.
Thank you, if I could just say one thing, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I think you get it, understanding of the board, I respect the town managers coming from, but the plan of what our town planners. And I hope to think that when whoever you sit down with and you start being creative to take a look at the big picture here, and I'll say it again. Ten units on one acre, that's a decent amount of apartments on that. You know, I, like, once again, everyone's saying, we want to see these be built. I'd love to see these, uh, units be built, is, uh, so we can understand. Maybe down the road, somebody would say, oh, yeah, twenty would be fine, I doubt that very much. People might say, I think a, a lot less than ten is probably more desirable, once you start seeing this. You know, so that's the message I would hope to think our town planners, I don't try to micromanage anything, I don't do that. I don't think anybody would do that yet, but we all live in this community, we got to really take a good look at this, what, how we're going to do it. And I hope to think that the town planners come up with something that's not too creative, but creative enough to solve some of these issues. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Valerie, so I think the message that, that you, hopefully you take from this, and I'll ask my colleagues to speak up if I misstate it. Uh, but I think the message you can take from this is that we as a board are in agreement that the town should be taking steps. To get in front of, uh, the ten percent, um, forty-B requirement. Uh, so I'm, I'm probably saying that incorrectly, but we don't want to sit back and just let the market sort of organically evolve. And fall victim to a forty-B situation, so, um, you've proposed a couple of scenarios that have mixed reviews up here. Um, I don't know if that's, if, if leaving here tonight, you have enough of a marching order to continue with. The work that you need to do to get us closer to a point where we can actually take specific action? Um, or if you're looking for something more tangible, more, more solid from us? And if that's the case, maybe we need to schedule part B of this. I don't know, I, 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 maybe that, that was somewhat in the form of a question. Do you, are you leaving here with enough to work with?
Well, I think, um, as Jeff mentioned, I think, um, if we want to be proactive and we want to do something especially. If we want to be proactive and use town-owned land, um, the surplus of that land would have to happen pretty quickly. For us to be on a timetable that gets us, you know, where we need to be around twenty-twenty. Um, I even worry that we're, you know, we're pushing it as it is, and Liz would say we are. So I guess the thing to consider would be, um, at our next town meeting, what, what is appropriate to bring there? As far as surplusing of town-owned land, because that would kind of be the first step in, in being proactive.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I really don't like the term of surplus land, as if the land is there to be given away. I, I mean, that's, that's a parcel of land that was acquired of one, one point six million dollars or so of seven acres of land. That I don't believe at the time the residents figured it would be used for affordable housing. I, my understanding was that it would be looked at for a new town administration and school administration building. So just to say surplus land as if it's, you know, meaningless, I, I, I would disagree with that terminology.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I could, go ahead. You know, I sat on the negotiations, I served on the board, and that was the attempt with Sluck and Kyra is saying, I'll be honest. I mean, here, we're sitting down with the Archdiocese, the Catholics, and we're sitting there looking to buy it because we're looking to maybe use it for municipal use. And I'm not going to look too, I don't know how anyone's going to look, going back to the, uh, you know, Archdiocese and say, all right, hey. We talked about doing a municipal, uh, look, maybe a municipal, uh, hometown hall or a, a school committee. Uh, a, a school, uh, superintendent's office, administration building, and now we're looking to do housing? And I don't feel too good about that, to be honest, right now at this point in time, knowing that I sat down and good-fate with the Catholic Church to negotiate a use for us. And now we're going to turn that around, agree with Mr. Kyra, what he's saying, and we're going to do that. I don't know if anybody can do that, I don't feel too good about that right now. I don't feel too good about that right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just point out that, you know, when we use the word surplus, or when Valerie used the word surplus, I don't think the intent is to suggest that we've got an overabundance of land that the town owns. And there's clearly no question that, you know, they're not, Wilmington is not annexing additional, you know, land, the town, you know, we have the parcels of land that we have, and, you know, unless we purchase additional land, it is what it is. I think the reference is simply to the fact that if the town were to go that route, there would have to be a designation that the town believes that the property has no other purpose, that the town sees for it. It's not suggesting that, you know, so that is what it is. It's not suggesting that today we believe that, you know, we bought that property and we don't need it. I don't recall at the town meeting, I think it was pretty open-ended, there was certainly speculation that it might be a good spot for a general government slash school administration facility, but we deliberately, I certainly deliberately didn't want to commit to anything. I think, you know, one of the challenges that we have is that there needs, if we are to avoid the prospect of going below ten percent, and I'll certainly, Valerie or Liz, if you want to correct me here, it seems like there needs to be a fairly large-scale project, probably an apartment-type complex, where we can get credit for all of those units. In the absence of that, you know, the prospect of selling individual parcels that the town might own and structuring that so maybe of five parcels, we sell three of them, become affordable, that's not going to maybe lessen the degree by which we go below ten percent, but it's not going to avoid us going below ten percent. So for better or worse, we're in a position today where, absent some more significant type of project, we will go below ten percent. That's everything I have gathered from this conversation.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate, this is good conversation, but I hope that's all it is, because I'm reminded of a few years back when the townspeople approved and are paid for a facilities master plan, which we've yet to see the final results from. And so I would respect all the work that that committee's done, and I look forward to seeing their final results before we decide to do anything. I mean, that's what the taxpayers voted for. I think I would be hesitant to move forward on any project without having all the facts. I don't think that taxpayers want to fund anything without knowing all the options and seeing the final results of that survey that they approved a few years back at town meeting.
Agreed. Yeah, I would agree with that assertion as well, Greg. I think the facilities master plan will be very revealing as to what is available, what the recommendations are from that committee, and I think out of that, hopefully, will materialize maybe some more direction. I understand your desire and your intent to try to act quickly. I think it's, at this point, I feel like it's a little bit premature, and maybe if we're late to the table, it is what it is. But I wouldn't want to be hasty and rush into doing something that we would ultimately either regret or lead the townspeople in the wrong direction inadvertently, just because we're being hasty. So what's the forecast for facility master plan? Forgive me for not having that at my fingertips.
So the plan is to have a joint meeting that would include the finance, members of the finance committee, the school committee, and the Board of Selectmen. We're still trying to establish a date targeting early June. Looking to work with, and also obviously involve the Cecil Group, so we're, we will let you know as soon as we have a date.
I think after that, maybe we could schedule Part B and get a little bit more tangible, specific about some thoughts about action plans for the rest of this calendar year and have something, unless there's some other action plan you want to pursue, but over the course of the late summer and into fall, we can devise an action plan and a proposal, a formal proposal, to put in front of the town meeting attendees that this Board of Selectmen has endorsed. I don't know, that's the best I can offer at this hour.
And clearly, to the point about the facilities master plan, I think Valerie was correct in pointing out the nexus between the facilities plan and our affordable housing component. There was at town meeting an amendment to the original article directing us to, as part of the overall facilities plan, to be mindful and to pay attention to how we create affordable senior housing. So that's why that's been rolled into this. But there's no question that we need to finalize that plan before we can go forward with the larger issue of dealing with affordable housing. So with the expectation that we can have this meeting in early June, we're looking to wrap up the facilities plan this summer, and then we'll go forward from there.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick point if you could. I agree with Mr. Bendel talking about the massive facilities plan. As we keep on brainstorming and talking, it's only, now we're talking about, do we want to take in no action or action? Maybe we should take our time a little bit, wait till 2020. Let's see, we've got three years. Let's see these developments be built.
I agree.
Mr. Wright's, Lowell Street, and Main Street, before we jump the gun. I think it's too premature for us to come to a town meeting next year, and we've seen how town meeting has acted, you know? So I'm just going to say that right now. We shouldn't be in a big rush. We should see that, you know, I'm not going to even say anymore. I'm glad to hear Mr. Kyra say that, and I think Mr. Bendel's correct.
I agree with Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do take that position, then in 2010, in 2020, we find ourselves below ten percent and vulnerable to a forty B project that we don't have say over.
But we don't know that.
We don't know what?
We really don't know that that's going to happen in 2020, that we're going to fall below the ten percent.
We know that.
No, we do know that, I think. I'm fairly confident we have that as data. Is that not what was presented?
Right.
We can't, I don't believe we can expect that the, leaving the future housing development to market forces is going to get us out of falling below ten percent. So we have this development on Andover Street, twenty-seven units, three of which are affordable. So best-case scenario, that keeps us treading water, but as other developments come forward, some of those developments will not include an affordable component, so that causes us to fall further behind.
That's the only area of land in town that requires an affordable component. There are no other affordable requirements in town. So all of the projects that are being reviewed or even talked about do not have to provide an affordable component. They don't have to provide any affordable units. So I'm not sure how we would add to our subsidized housing inventory over the next three years when we don't have a requirement for affordable units.
What Mr. Chairman is saying, you know, not a requirement, we've got three years. We shouldn't be in rushed judgment to do something immediately. Sounds like the state is saying, we're not, they're not obligated, Main Street, Lowell Street, to do anything affordable, because it's not 2020 yet. You know, we should really slow it down and really decide what we really want to do. We shouldn't speed the process up. Let those things be built.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing I would be hesitant to do is bring another project before the taxpayers next year, when we're all still paying for a beautiful high school. I don't know what the response would be from folks.
I don't think, we're not talking about the town paying for a project.
Well, no, we're talking about...
We're not, the town's not going to get into the business of building affordable housing, right? I mean, is that...
No, you're talking about giving away a piece of land.
You're talking about giving away an over, close to a $2 million piece of land that was purchased by the residents.
With a deed restriction that requires a portion of it to be affordable so that we don't end up with a development elsewhere in town that would be undesirable. It allows us to control the process as opposed to having the process control us. That's all I'm saying. And if we want to not do the St. Dorothy's, okay, we can have that conversation, but I think we need to take forward, we need to take steps so that we do not fall below ten percent in 2020, because we will be at that date vulnerable to a forty B project, and we won't have any say over it. And we talked about the culture and the fabric of our community and the character of our community, and a forty B project that comes into this community, very potentially, not absolutely, as Ms. Russ said in the beginning of her presentation. Sometimes they go, they fit well, but you don't know, and you don't have control over it. And it's very possible that in 2020, a forty B project comes into Wilmington that is not consistent with the fabric and the character of our town. And I don't want to, well, I won't take action or take no action that results in that. So I may be in the minority, and so be it, but from where I sit, I have to, I will, if there's a vote taken at this table at some point at a future meeting, I'll be voting that this community move forward with some action that puts more affordable housing into Wilmington by 2020 so that we don't have a forty B project, because I don't want a forty B project.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, I'm not opposed to doing that. My point is that I just want to be patient and wait on the results of the facilities master plan and respect the wishes of the residents who voted for that. I don't want to jump ahead before we find out those findings have all the facts in front of us. No, so I wouldn't be hesitant to take any action until we found out.
And I agree with that, Greg. Thank you.
We can at least look at one thing, by zoning, the inclusionary, potential inclusionary bylaw, that can be voted on at next town meeting. If she comes up with something that makes sense for the town, that's something at least we can be starting to do, so when the next development comes in and he wants to build twenty-eight McMansions on Valen Lane, I'll use my street address, for example, at least three or four of them might be affordable in the next, if this bylaw gets passed. That's all I'm saying. We can't, I agree with Mr. Kyra and Mr. McCoy that we need to maybe slow down and look at this and let those developments be done, but in reality, Mr. Wright's project's only going to add three to the housing stock for ten percent. We need sixty by 2020, from what I read. So we have to do something. An inclusionary bylaw is at least a start, in my opinion.
It's a beginning.
Yep.
Let's have a conversation again after the facilities master plan comes to some conclusion.
Perfect.
Ms. Russ, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Great dialogue.
Jeff, I'll start in the communications, if you don't mind.
Yes, communications. The first item before you is a letter that was directed to James DiLorenzo, the project manager at EPA for the Olin project. And this was in response to some previous correspondence that initially came from Mr. DiLorenzo to Olin, and then their response. So this letter indicates that, first of all, we believe, we the town, that the Olin's objection to being required to address the dapple at this point, we don't agree with. We're looking for Olin to hold fast in imposing that requirement on Olin. We also note that the long-term, one of the long-term goals of this whole remediation is to return and restore the Maple Meadow Brook Aquifer to its original state, or certainly as close to it as possible, and dealing with this dapple is part of that issue. So this correspondent went to Mr. DiLorenzo and was copied to our legislative delegation and others.
Thank you.
Next is correspondence from the DPW as a memorandum, my direction to me and to the board to address concerns that were raised about the Butters Row Bridge. I won't go into all the details here, but some of the noteworthy points is that it's currently rated, posted weight limit of five tons or 10,000 pounds. The bridge underwent reconstruction in 1987, and in December, December 11th, December of 2011, the timber decking was replaced in June of 2012. Asphalt was, the wearing course was replaced over the wood decking, and then in September of 2013, some repairs were done on the wearing course. The Mass DOT uses a bridge coating system to rate various elements of the bridge, and we have one category of the bridge that's rated as fair, which is the deck and the substructure of the deck. And then there's a second area, which is the so-called superstructure, is rated as being in poor condition, meaning advanced sections of the area have experienced some deterioration. The bridge inspections are done on a cyclical basis, depending upon the condition of the bridge. In our case, because we have one section of the bridge rated as poor, the inspections are done yearly. The next inspection is due in June of 2017, so right around the corner. The, there's some work that's been identified as slated to be completed. One piece of that is to remove and replace sections of the timber decking, and then the second piece of work that'll be done during this construction season would be resurfacing of the wearing course on the bridge itself.
So, I'm sorry, this was presented to Paul and Jamie and Mike by DOT, and then you culled it together and presented it to us? What's the source of this?
So the, these individuals, Paul Looney, the town engineer, Jamie McGoldy, and Mike Woods, gathered this information in conversation with people at Mass DOT in the Region Four district, which we're part of.
Through the chair, to the town manager, I want to thank you for getting this information. I know I brought it up at the last meeting. It's very revealing. It's listed as poor and fair, and the reason why we brought it up at the last meeting is concern from the facilities master plan about getting emergency vehicles across that bridge. What is the likelihood of approaching Mass DOT, either legislatively or yourself or through our engineer and Mike Woods, the Public Works Director of constructing a new bridge there? What needs to take place to get something over there that's now in poor condition so that we can get this in good condition, so that we're not worried, especially with the potential of that new development going on over there on Main Street, and the potential of more traffic over that bridge, and it to be just a single-lane bridge, is quite worrisome and...
Right.
What needs to, what actions do we need to do to approach Mass DOT to say, "Let's get a new bridge"?
Well, so the information that these gentlemen presented to me is that the, there's a number of bridges in various stages of deterioration, and I don't have an exact number, but the, this coating system that they use to rate the bridges is what they use to set the priorities. So essentially, it's a triage process where they deal with the bridges that are in greatest jeopardy, that are either on the borderline of being unsafe or unsafe, and funding is made available to those communities. I'm told that if there is any resistance by either members, officials from the town or the impacted neighborhood, then they will move on to the next project. So, you know, one of the challenges, I think, in, with this bridge, and I certainly don't know the result, but my sense is there may be some concern... know the result, but my sense is there may be some concern as there was back in, whether it was the late 90s or early 2000s, when this was originally proposed to be reconstructed. We had hired at the time an engineer. They came out and put a fair amount of work at the town's expense into developing some design, and I think we were either at the 25% stage or certainly close to that. There was a public hearing, and at that time, and granted, that was quite a number of years ago, there was a sizable crowd in this room that was very much opposed to doing anything to that bridge because the concern was it would generate more traffic, make it much easier for folks to get off of Main Street and use that as a cut through. So it, long and the short of it is, there's a priority system based upon the rating of bridges, and if there is resistance to any measure to a new bridge, then they'll move on to the next one.
Mr., if I could, is there any way that this memo could be posted on our website, town website? Some of these photos, this report, so that the public could see this?
Sure, I think we can at least put some of it. I'm not sure if we can put the whole thing, but maybe as an attachment.
Yeah.
Please, Mr. McCoy.
Thanks. I understand what Mr. Kyra is saying, and I do agree, we need to do something. But it was just a couple of months ago, and I go back where Jeff was talking, maybe 25 years ago. Couple of months ago, the manager was gracious enough to have a meeting with the chief of police. A lot of concern was obviously Butters Row and Chestnut Street. And go back to what the manager was talking 25 plus years ago, folks back then stated they would like to see, obviously, a new bridge, but they would like to see it as a single lane bridge. I mean, that message was loud and clear back 20 something years ago. That message was still loud and clear in that room just a couple of months. Residents would like to see that, a single lane bridge. And I think we really need to try to honor that wish and try to make it a single lane bridge, because that's what's hoping, that's what's helping them from having extra traffic going down those little, you know, narrow roads. And those are called scenic roads, you know, so, you know, whatever we can look at.
I agree with Mr. McCoy, and if that's what the residents want, my only concern is as long as it's a safe bridge.
Oh, yeah, I'm with you.
Whether it's a single lane or a two lane bridge, as long as it's a safe bridge.
Yeah, I'm afraid to walk on it, to be honest with you, but.
Well, so it's my understanding that to the extent Mass DOT would put state money into reconstruction of a bridge, there are certain requirements, you know, as is any mass highway work, whether it's an intersection or the roadway project, you know, we've talked about the Route 38 project, there's certain requirements that, that we would need to meet or in terms of the design. And I do not expect that they would agree to fund the construction of a single lane bridge. I think there's a whole, and I don't, would certainly want to have the conversation with Mike and Paul and Jamie about the specifics to those requirements, but I would be very certain that they would not fund a single lane bridge. It would have to be two lanes, it would have to have a certain, you know, dimension and sidewalks and things like that.
It's a bit of a catch 22 then, isn't it? Either we live with the, the bridge in its current condition or with, you know, moderate, modest improvements, or we go through the pain and anguish and exercise and cost and et cetera of, of having a design of a, of a new bridge potentially for that location that we may or may not get, depending on how a, an open meeting goes. So I, I agree. I mean, what kills me is the bridge was built in 1920, it's posted for 10,000 pounds. How much does a fire engine weigh?
Well, so that's a good point. The, right now, the fire apparatus has to go down Burlington Ave to Chestnut Street. You know, wouldn't be safe to have a engine go over the bridge. We are able to, you know, pick up trucks would, can go over the bridge, but the heavier equipment certainly couldn't.
Yeah, no, I, I think it should be done. I think it should be a two lane. I think the residents, we should have discussion as their concerns. We should look at it. And I, I don't think it's going to increase traffic tremendously at all. I mean, there's traffic there all the time. What's going to increase the traffic is the development of, of the apartments that will be there, but traffic is, is everywhere. My concern is safety, getting the fire apparatus over there. It is a bad bridge and it needs to be addressed. And I know some of the residents down there complain that they, you know, they can't walk the street because of the traffic. And we talked about sidewalks, the possibility of putting that in. There might be the beginning of doing that as well, but that, we need to address it. Because if we're saying now, a fire truck has to go all the way down Burlington Ave and cut across Chestnut Street and then come up, I mean, that's, that's not a good.
Chair, Mr. McCoy, Mr. Manager might have brought up that we, that the town looked into this in the late 90s, early 2000s, certainly long before I was involved here. But is there any way to get, trying to get a pulse from the residents down there? Is there a way we could survey them, you know, invite them in? I mean, is that, we're talking 20 years later, is it something that they still, maybe they are opposed to it? I don't know, you know?
I think certainly it might be worth considering putting this on as an agenda item as to whether the town should pursue a new bridge for that location and perhaps that would get a pulse from the folks in that neighborhood. Again, I, I would, I don't think there's a lot of clarity in terms of how long it would take, because I don't know right now how many bridges are in worse condition. And, you know, obviously, that is a changing condition. Some, you know, there could be bridges that today are behind us in the queue, so to speak, that deteriorate more rapidly than this one that could put ahead of it. But we've been told that the basis for prioritizing these is this inspection process and, and the condition that these bridges are reported to be in.
Yeah.
Jeff, at Yentel Farm Development, we learned that, wasn't Mass DOT looking at the Route 38 corridor from 129 down to the Woburn Line? I would think this would be part of that or at least that intersection.
Well, certainly, the intersection is part of the project, and we will, we do have on the docket a meeting that will probably take place in July, where the engineer that the town has hired will come in and provide the board with a presentation on the status of that project. So to answer your question, the project from 30, from 38 and 62 down to the Woburn Line is moving ahead in terms of the engineering. It doesn't specifically and wouldn't include addressing this bridge. That's out of the scope of this project.
Maybe it should be added in the safety of the people in that area are most important.
So can we, can we do that? Can we invite residents or somehow, I guess, figure out what the delineation is of who, do we want to send a memo to or a letter or by virtue of making an announcement? How would we go about making sure that all residents in that area are specifically notified, that we would have that on an agenda item?
Well, so I guess, you know, are we talking about, I mean, there's a sizable group there when you talk about all of Butters Row and Chestnut Street and Topath and Marion Street. I mean, it's, question becomes, you know, who, we can send, certainly send letters out, but I don't know offhand. I think there's several thousand homes in that area that we would. But certainly posting it on our website with the expectation that it's picked up via the media, I would suspect that, you know, as is the case when many hot button issues surface, people will, will attend a meeting. So my suggestion is that the board consider putting this as an agenda item, whether it's at your next meeting on the 22nd or your first meeting in June, perhaps. Maybe the first meeting in June to give a little bit of time to get the word out. But, and then we can have Public Works here, and we'll, in the meantime, do some further research on, you know, getting more specifics about the timing of such a project and, and how access to funds would work.
Can we tentatively say, what, what date does that is? June? I don't see it here. When would we meet? First, in June?
Second, Monday in June, so.
The 12th. Just tentatively now, so anyone that might be listening in that area or, so that between now and then, we'll start to put the bones together for that and can start to do some preliminary advertising, as it were, and marketing through social media and other other manners.
Will do.
Thank you.
Next is a memo that was sent to the board a week or so ago. This just summarizes the plans for filling the vacancy on the Board of Appeals. As is noted here, the board directed me to arrange for a special meeting of the board on the 24th of May, where you will interview or meet with candidates who are interested in the open seat. We established a deadline of May 17th for those who are interested to provide letters of interest to my office. And the board will receive with your packets on May 19th, the full list and letters of interest from all of those who have put forward their letters of interest. I think to this point, we have five individuals who expressed interest. One of the things that I'll be talking to the chair about is when to start the meeting. It certainly is, if they're, depending on the number of individuals, you may want to start earlier than seven o'clock, whether it's 6:30 or whatever, but we'll figure that out. Next is letters that you have seen previously. I just wanted to include them once again tonight because the board's on the agenda is the appointment of constables. So you'll recall that previously you received letters seeking reappointment from Paul Bruce Jr., Ronald D. Gregorio, and John Rowan, all seeking reappointment to constable. Also, there was a letter, again, you received this previously, but just as a reminder, that was sent out to John Gogan, seeking his input on a candidate to the Board of Registars on behalf of the Republican Party. As is often the case, we did not receive a response, and as has been the practice in the past, when a response has not been provided, the recommendation is to reappoint the current individual.
Which jumps us into Board to Consider items, if I'm following along closely.
Yes. First item on the board to consider is a request by Karen Campbell, Recreation Director, looking to reserve the Town Common and Gazebo for the annual summer concert series for the following dates, Wednesday, July 5th, rain date being Thursday, July 2nd. Wednesday, July 12th, rain date, Thursday, July 13th. Wednesday, July 19th, rain date, July 20th. And then Wednesday, July 26th, with a rain date of Thursday, July 27th. Concert times would run from 6:30 to 8:00 PM.
Move to grant the request.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Great, looking forward to those, those events. Hopefully, we'll see lots of people out there.
Next is a Board to Consider from Marie Kaelin, Guidance Curriculum Team Leader to Use the Swain Green in Municipal Parking Lot. And she notes here in her email, I've been directed by George Huber to contact you regarding the use of, of the Wilmington High School Student Parking Lot in Swain Green for the purpose of the class of 2017 senior barbecue on June 2nd from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's no conflicts that we know of.
We have a motion made, second, Mr. Lo, and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous? Wonderful. Thank you.
Next under Board to Consider is the execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wilmington and NEPBA Local One, which is the patrol officers. The terms of this agreement would extend from July 1, 2016 to July 1, 2019. The, it's a 2% COLA in each of those fiscal years. There is, within each of these, within the rank of patrol, there's a six step wage scale. Part of the proposal includes shifting the scale up so that the current step one would be removed, and what is currently step two would then become step one, and then there would be a, a step added on to the other end, so it still continues to be a six step system, but the scale of pay would increase. Night shift differential adjustments. Currently, patrol officers receive a buck 25 per hour if they're working from four in the afternoon until midnight, and then from midnight to eight. They, actually, they also receive that same amount. The proposal or the going forward would be that the four to midnight would receive a dollar 50 per hour in additional compensation, and from midnight to eight in the morning, they would receive a dollar 75 per hour for that shift. Detail rates, currently $42 an hour. The proposal would increase, or this contract would increase the rate to $44 an hour effective 30 days following execution of the contract. Also, effective as of 1-1, 2018, the detail rate would go up to $46 an hour. And then as of 1-1, 2019, the rate goes up to $48 an hour. Longevity, this is a benefit that has been in these contracts since the late 60s, as I understand it. Currently, the system is that people get a 3% increase in their base pay after five years of service, and then every five years thereafter, up to a maximum of 15%. The adjustment here is that new hires would not be entitled to a longevity increase until they've worked for the town for 10 years, and the adjustment would be capped at 12% instead of the current 15%. We would also, under the new contract, be able to use assessment centers for the purpose of promotion. Assessment centers are currently under the civil service process, which is what police operate under. When they're seeking a promotion, there's a standardized test, a multiple choice test that they take and they, that is scored, and people are ranked based upon that score. We strongly believe that when you're going into a supervisory rank, it's important to include other factors beyond simply how well you were able to do on a multiple choice test. And so assessment centers establish certain scenarios where officers are called upon to respond as to how they would react in that situation. So it's an important feature for us. And then finally, there was a, as part of this agreement, it's understood that police, patrol personnel will engage in the use of Narcan and tasers as appropriate, and will go through the necessary training for that. So the, we have copies of the contract. I would be seeking a vote from the Board of Selectmen to authorize this contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to make a motion if you would like me to read it.
Please do, sir.
Yeah, just simply, I, I, I moved that the Town of Wilmington is an agreement with New England Police Benavah Association, Local One, as described, and it's entied by the town manager.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this? This is, this contract that you just highlighted is exactly as was presented to us in executive session two weeks ago and was agreed upon by the Board of Selectmen, yes?
It is.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? I see none. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
And I would ask, after the meeting- And I would ask, after the meeting this evening, that the board sign contracts in my office. Next is a, under the Board to Consider is acceptance of a deed for property off of Chestnut Street, the Green Meadow Drive property, which is a 26-lot conservation subdivision. So as is the case with these types of subdivisions, in exchange for the developer having the opportunity to increase the density of the development, they would convey to the town property that would be reserved and retained as open space through the Conservation Commission. In this case, it's a 30-acre parcel that would remain open, 30.4 acres to be precise. And one of the, I think, particularly great features about this is that there are opportunities for this property and trails coming from this property to connect with developments, both in adjoining it, such as the Murray Hill Estates, Kylie Estates, and also with property in Burlington. So it creates, fulfills one of the missions, quite frankly, of the open space and recreation master plan, which was to create open space and trails within those spaces. So I would be looking for a vote of the board to accept this deed.
Make a motion. We accept.
Second. Motion is made in seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Just like to go on record as thanking the trustee.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm looking forward to also the enhancement of the trail network in town as well. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is consideration of appointments and reappointments. First, we have, and this list has been presented previously to the board. These are appointments scheduled to be considered by the Board of Selectmen. The Animal Control Officer, one-year term to expire in 2018, Christopher Sullivan. For the Board of Appeals, five-year term to expire 2022, Thomas Syracusea. Board of Registars, three-year term to expire 2020, Edward Sousa. Council of Arts, two-year terms to expire 2020, Sarah Brooke, Jean Chang, Marguerite Elia, and Danielle Gambardino, and Linda Malloy. And then for Fence Viewer, one-year term to expire June 30, 2018, Paul Looney and John Spalding. For the Scholarship Fund Committee, three-year terms to expire 2020, Paul Rogero, interim superintendent, Suzanne Clarkin, Carol King, Robert Peterson, and Michelle Kyra Norton. Town Accountant, three-year term to expire 2020, Mike Morris. Town Council, one-year term to expire June 30, 2018. This would be with the firm of Deutsch Williams, Brooks, Durensis, and Holland. And then for Constables, one-year terms to expire 2018, the following individuals, Barbara Cola, Jason Costa, Alan Hunter, Frank Ingram, Esquire, John Bridges, Jr., Paul Bruce, Jr., Ronald D. Gregorio, Dennis Otis, William Pepaselli, John Rowan, and Anthony Seiya. Just noting that Christopher Sullivan would be also only for the purpose of duties as Animal Control Officer. These appointments require the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
I would accept a motion to take him as a group unless there's a reason someone needs to go individual.
Make a motion that we accept him as a group, as described and announced by the Town Manager?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thanks to those individuals for their service.
Next are the slate of appointments that I would be recommending, subject to the board's approval. First, to the Commission on Disabilities, a three-year term to expire 2020, Phyllis P. Dejanetti. And I would also note that there is, on the Disabilities Commission, another seat that is currently vacant that would need to be occupied by either an appointed or an elected official. We don't have anyone in that category at this moment. Another term to expire in 2019, again, I would just note for the public, currently this position is vacant, but the qualifier is that the individual must have a handicap. These, by way of information, these qualifications for these seats are established by the State Commission on Disabilities. Also, there's a term to expire 2018. Again, there are two vacancies here. One of the seats must be occupied by an individual with a disability. The second vacancy must be occupied by a family member of an individual with a disability. If anyone is interested, please send a letter of interest to my attention.
May I ask you, Jeff, can you highlight what typically, what the workload is, what the demands are of members on that, on the Commission on Disabilities?
It has, typically, they will, if there are issues that are brought to their attention from individuals in the disability community, problems with access to businesses, perhaps, they would contact a member of the Disabilities Commission, and the commission could contact the business and apprise them of the issue. This group, quite frankly, has not been particularly active of late because there hasn't been the membership to do that. It's my understanding in talking to Dejanetti, who has been the chair for many years now, that the Mass Commission on Disabilities is looking to kind of re-energize or reactivate these committees across the state. We're not unique in that respect.
Thank you.
Next, under Historical Commission, for three-year terms to expire 2020, Gerald Duggan, Robert Mallett, and the newest member, which I'm proposing, he's not currently a member but could be, is Jess Finelli. And then, under Permanent Building Committee, three-year terms to expire 2020, George Hooper II and John Holloway. So these I'm recommending for the board's consideration.
Is there a motion to approve these individuals?
Two more. Second.
Made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. And again, thanks to those individuals and any folks out there that feel inspired to volunteer for the town, please contact the Town Manager's office.
Next, these are appointments that I have made, appointments or reappointments. Animal Control, Animal Inspector, rather, one-year term to expire 2018, Christopher Sullivan. Building Inspector, one-year term to expire 2018, John T. Spalding. We do have a vacancy within the local inspector category, but we have an applicant in that's being considered at the moment. Carda Lecture Fund Committee, three-year term to expire 2020, Andrea Hauser. Cemetery Commission, three-year term to expire 2020, Pasquale D'Antonio. Conservation Commission, three-year term to expire 2020, Julie Flynn and Sharon Kelly Perella. Elderly Services Commission, three-year term to expire 2020, Robin Thaddeus and John Wallace. Electrical Inspector, one-year term to expire 2018, Frederick Sutter, and then Arthur Kelly is the alternate. Gas Inspector, one-year term to expire 2018, Paul Raffey and John Mitek is the alternate. Board of Health, three-year term to expire 2020, Elizabeth Sabunjin. Library Trustee, three-year term to expire 2020, James Lee May and Eileen McDougall. Metropolitan Area Planning Council Representative, three-year term to expire 2020, Valerie Gingrich. To the Middlesex Canal Commission, two-year term to expire 2019, Betty Bigwood, Michael McInnes, and Neil Devens. Planning Board, five-year term to expire 2022, Michael Sorrentino. Plumbing Inspector, one-year term to expire 2018, Paul Raffey, and the alternate is John Mitek. Public Weyer, one-year term to expire 2018, Paul Anderson, Robert Antisaka, and Stephen Stella and David Segru. Reading Municipal Light Department Citizens Advisory Board, three-year term to expire 2020, Dennis Kelly. Recreation Commission, three-year term to expire 2020, C. Michael Burns. Veterans Agent, one-year term to expire 2020, Louis Semaglia. Veterans Grave Officer, one-year term to expire 2018, Louis Semaglia. Water and Sewer Commissioner, three-year term to expire 2020, George Allen. Wiring Inspector, one-year term to expire 2018, Frederick Sutter, and Arthur Kelly as the alternate.
Move to grant the appointments?
No need to.
The Town Manager's appointments. You better do a little something, right?
I'm in support of it, too.
So that concludes Board to Consider. Brings us to public comments. Anyone wish to be heard? Anyone else? Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. I was watching. I saw your pledge of allegiance to the flag, and I appreciate that. Couple of things jumped out at me, the words liberty and justice for all. So I hope, I don't know, maybe that just goes for this meeting, I don't know. But we'll have to, we'll have to take that into consideration. But I guess a couple of questions that I have. At the town meeting, there was a banking article, and part of that article had to do with the Selectmen giving direction and authorization to the treasurer. And so, I guess my question to you, Mr. Shampoo, since you set the agenda for the meeting, would you commit to the town to have a public hearing relative to the banking matter, since it involves like over $59.7 million?
No, but thank you for asking.
You wouldn't have a public hearing? Because one of the issues that Mr. Hull brought up at the town meeting was that we couldn't have all our money put into banks in our town that would reinvest in our town because of the concern for fees. And I actually talked to a bank in particular and spoke about that issue, and they said they actually have a particular branch and department in their bank that deals with municipalities. And, you know, they spoke about programs that have no fees. So I thought, you know, nearly $60 million would be something of a concern to not only this board, but the entire town, that we're getting the actual best rate of return on our money. And I'm troubled by the fact that you wouldn't have a public hearing to seek input from people in town that are probably a lot smarter than us, possibly inviting some financial institutions in, so that the people of Wilmington are really, they got a fair shot, seeing as though they're being really hit pretty hard in taxes.
Okay. I'll answer you on that. The people of Wilmington have an opportunity to have their voice heard by virtue of elections that happen every year and putting people at this board. And so, we've been duly elected to be their voice. We interact with the town management on an ongoing daily basis between Jeff and Dee and others in Town Hall. I have been, for the eight years that I've been on this board, assured by Jeff Hall and his predecessor, and I have the full confidence that our banking relationships are in the best interest of the people of Wilmington. I continue to maintain that same level of confidence. While I appreciate that you do not at all share that same level of confidence, it is what it is. Now, that doesn't preclude any of the other members of this board to take action if they see fit, but you're asking me a question, I'm giving you the answer. The answer is no, because I feel confident that I've already done so by virtue of having the assurance of our town management. I have faith in our town management.
I guess I'd put that question to the rest of the members. If Mr. Hull has a philosophy that might not be accurate, if it might come into question where a public hearing, public input, corporate input, could benefit the community, I don't know why our elected officials wouldn't want to act in the best interest of the community, seeing as though, you know, $59.7 million is a lot of money. And looking at some of the bank accounts and seeing that we get actually 0% on some of them, and a lot of them get less than 1%. It's my concern that people are being taxed, they're working hard, they're having their money basically ripped away from their families to put in, into the town from their taxes. And then to see that money going into banks in other communities and having Wilmington's hard-earned dollars being put to work for other communities, profiting other communities, benefiting other communities, it's perplexing to hear you say that, Mr. Shampoo, that you're not willing to actually do that. So I'd like to hear from the rest of the members, if you would, open it up to their opinions.
I don't get in the way of anyone wanting to answer a question. I don't know, Mr. Bendel?
Are you asking for a public hearing on this?
Well, I thought a public hearing would be beneficial. I think having input, let's put it this way, I think there are people that are a lot smarter than us in this town. And...
No, I would agree with you. A public hearing would be fit for that. And we just had one, April 29th was called Town Meeting, and it was approved unanimously by the residents.
Did you read the article?
I did.
And you saw that the Selectmen give authorization and direction to the treasurer where to put the money? And have you ever, have you ever looked at all the bank balances and all the institutions at all the banks and actually see interest rates, Mr. Bendel?
Actually, I have not, because the taxpayers, including myself, pay fine people like the manager and the people who work in this building to do that for us, and I trust them as Mr. Shampoo does.
I would remind you that this board is actually an oversight board whose responsibility is to make sure that the manager is managing the town in the best interest of the community. And it's actually disturbing that you, being on this board for as long as you have, haven't seen all the bank balances, and you probably can't even name the financial institutions that the money is in. So forget benefiting the community, maybe a public hearing would actually benefit you, because you'd actually learn something about your job.
Do you have another question for us this evening, Mr. Bendel?
Yeah, I had a few. Basically...
You're not going to get through a few, so pick the good one.
Okay. Well, you know, part of the, part of the town meeting had to do with, you know, considerable amount of money. One was a hockey rink enterprise fund. And so, my question is to the Town Manager, Mr. Hull, do you actually, can you actually tell us what this money is going to cover? Like, as far as equipment, property? Can you tell us that?
The money is not, it's a placeholder. There's no money being taken from anyone's, there's no taxation happening here. It's if the town is successful in becoming an owner of a hockey rink, then the fund would be put in place and would be funded by the operations of the rink. So that, the fund would then be in place to pay for overhead of the operation, the heat, the Zamboni, the ice, all the things that go along with the operations of a hockey rink. But there's no taxation happening. So I don't want you to think that money was allocated out of the budget into the rink, but the town meeting is required to establish the presence of that fund just in case we do become in possession of the hockey rink. Did I say that right?
Right. All it is, is an authorization through the revolving account that that would be the maximum amount to be made available in that revolving account through proceeds generated from the rink, not through taxation.
What's your next question?
Well, I mean, I don't know if I got the first question answered about the banking, because...
You got it answered as much as you're going to get.
You were against it, a public hearing. Mr. Bendel was against it. He acknowledged that he's never seen any of the bank accounts. We've got three more members. Could there be three members that might be willing to say...
Mr. Loud, please. Mr. Chairman, I thought we had a town meeting a week or so ago. Can we move on, please?
I'm trying to.
Okay.
I'll just say real quick, Mr. Chairman, if you want. I've been on the board for a while and there's a thing called mutual respect that under the Town Manager Act, he's the chief fiscal officer. He can enter agreements as he choose fits of certain things, but the bottom line is, I get the faith in Jeff. I think he's done a decent job and I'm sure he can crunch out the numbers a lot better than I can.
Well, you know, I do have a concern about that because doing some research, there was a town official that seemed to be benefiting from a family member getting, working for a company that gets contracts to build bank branches. And so it's just a little concerning and I just don't understand why nobody up there would open it up to the town and say, "Look at..."
Because it's already been done, Kevin. We already said it. We had a town meeting. That's an opportunity for scrutinization to come up. The opportunity was there and the townspeople voted. So I'm asking you, sir, at this point, that's a dead issue for you. So move on to your next one.
One of the agenda items tonight was affordable housing. And so I just wanted if Mr. Hall could answer this question. Can you tell us how many vacant lots in town that the town owns that does not have to be subdivided, that could be available?
I don't have that information tonight, no.
Like within like 50 or 100 or...
I don't know.
Could you get that answer for the next meeting?
If the board chooses to have that information, sure.
Would the board like to know that?
What are you asking me, Ken?
Well, since one of the agenda items tonight was about affordable housing and the town being faced with large projects come in that the town has no zoning authorization over since we don't meet the threshold of the amount of affordable units. So my question is, since the town owns a lot of vacant land all around town that could be, could be sold or could be developed for affordable housing, it's just a simple question, like how many lots does the town have? Single lots, say 10,000 acre lots or 20,000, 10,000 square foot lots or 20,000 square foot lots, just single lots around town. I mean, I look at the assessors map, I see hundreds of them. And rarely do I see a substantial effort being made to make those available so that the town isn't forced to have mega apartment buildings come in that they have no control of.
Mr. Chairman.
Valerie presented us a minimum of six that she found right away of these lots that you're talking about. So if you were here for the whole presentation, you would have heard that. That's one of our three options that we could possibly do going forward to reach our 10%. That's definitely an option for the town to build on these smaller lots, affordable housing. So that's something that's, we're working on, Kevin.
Yeah, I understand that, but I was watching it. I was watching the meeting and then it came down here thinking that I could offer some input with some questions to see if we could actually get some answers. And can you tell us how many lots, how many units we'd have to provide to meet that threshold?
Sixty by 2020.
Okay, so...
The town is going to lose 60 affordable units by 2020. We have to come up with 60 affordable units by 2020 who are going to be deemed...
Below the threshold.
Oh, the threshold for 40, for the 10% in the 40B potential in 2020.
For example, like 30 duplex lots could handle that. 20 triplex lots could handle that.
It was all discussed. It was all discussed.
Listen, I'm not going to put the town manager or anybody else in Town Hall on a treasure hunt to get you a piece of information when in fact, in the course of doing their business and doing their job, they are looking at every avenue to, by virtue of the fact that we had the presentation and talked for, talked about it for the better part of two hours tonight, the town is taking very seriously the situation of affordable housing and our threshold for 2020. So whatever that number is, is what it is and it's part of the overall calculus that the town is taking. But I'm not going to ask the town manager or anybody else to go and do a plot count for you. It's just, it's a waste of time.
You don't even have to give it to me. You could actually give it to the rest of the community because the rest of the community, I would think, would be concerned with that.
The rest of the community is concerned about it and we're working on it. I see, I see Mr. Semaglia's got his hand up, so please, sir.
I just want to thank you all for your service again, volunteering your time. It's a very informative meeting. I was able to make the first three quarters of it and I had to run home for an issue. But I just want to thank you all, all the appointments. You thanked all the volunteers and people sometimes lose focus that you guys are volunteers as well. And I just want to thank you all for that. And as a concerned citizen, I appreciate the presentation that was given today and I thought it was very informative and very helpful. And I don't think we need to do it here at all again. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Semaglia. Please make it your last one.
Since the agenda had to do with your police contract, how does the Board of Selectmen enter into a contract for three years when the budget has to come before the town meeting every year? Like for example, if you enter into a contract tonight and sign it and then next year the budget comes before the town and they say, "No, we're going to like reduce the police budget by $500,000. We think of maybe overstaffed." Or maybe somebody is down in the police department right now in the lobby seeing, say, six guys watching this meeting instead of patrolling the town. So just, I'm just kind of curious, like how do you enter into a contract when every year you have to go before the town meeting with the budget approval? Can you tell me that? Is there some type of stipulation in there that says if town meeting should so, reduce the budget?
Your question is understood and I'm going to defer to the town manager in the process on that one.
This agreement, as with any agreement, is subject to available funds. So there are multiple agreements that both the town and the school enter into that are multi-year. School bus contracts, for example, are multi-year. There's any number of other arrangements we enter into that are multi-year, but it ultimately is subject to town meeting approval. So if in a given year, the vote, you know, there is a budget for the expected expenditure out of a particular account, if the funds are not made available, then we have to come up with an alternative.
Thank you. Asked and answered. So is there any other public comments from anybody else?
Could I just ask a question?
I'm sorry?
Bring it on. Bring it on.
Since Mr. Semaglia is here, will you, Mr. Shampoo, may I ask you a question pertaining to veterans?
Sure. I'm ready. I have to pop my head up here.
Yes, Mr. McDonald, you may do that.
Okay. So I've been, I spent some time down at Demming Way and there were vacant units there and I'm just wondering why Mr. Semaglia hasn't filled those with homeless veterans. And the other question I have is if we have a receptionist at the Town Hall here and Mr. Semaglia happens to be on the phone with a veteran, say, how come we can't have the calls coming to the Town Hall, having the receptionists receive that call, take a message and then send that to Mr. Semaglia, say via email to return that call rather than hiring an additional staff member there, seeing as though the town's faced with, what was it, $119 million unfunded mandate for pensions, Mr. Hall? Can you just maybe get some answers to that?
Absolutely. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity because we all don't live in a land of unicorns and candy cakes.
I thought we did.
Okay. So just to let anyone that would like to know out there, I'm very involved in my association through the legislation. And if anyone was really concerned about veterans, they would understand the Home Act that was just passed. There's a provision in there that says, quoting out of it, Mr. Chair, "In all housing for elderly persons of low income and handicapped persons of low income, there shall be preference in admission for eligibility in qualified applicants who are veterans." This was voted into the Home Act this past year for our, to our state legislators. We have had that practice with our housing authority for many years, far back as I am concerned. My office is pretty busy, but we don't do the housing authority's job. I work very closely with them as I do other departments and it is law now, but our, like I said, our housing authority has been doing that for years.
Why do units...
I don't think that we should have to answer to any more unicorn questions tonight. That's just me. I'm not, you're not the chair anymore, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please, Mr. Bendel.
A few weeks ago, we had a concerned resident here, he's actually in the audience tonight, who made the same suggestion that there were these openings at Demming Way. So I took it upon myself to reach out to the director and members of that board to find out just exactly how many openings are. And as of last week, when I inquired, there are two vacancies at Demming Way at this moment and they are currently being renovated. And when their units are turned over, that's the time that they take the opportunity to paint them, make any fixes to any windows. There are currently two out of all the 80 some odd units there that are being prepared for the next person to move in.
And will the next two people be veterans? Did you find that out?
I'm sure the next two people who are on the list will be put in those units.
But will it be veterans?
May I interrupt this moron here, please? Absolutely, they will be veterans, disabled veterans and then veterans and then widows of veterans. That's the way the list goes. It's the law.
And Mr. Chair, as a member of that committee for five years, I worked extremely closely with Mr. Semaglia and it was always his top priority that veterans and disabled veterans and widows of veterans were always at the top of the list. And I applaud the, all the work that Maureen Hickey and that board does and I applaud what Mr. Semaglia does every day.
Mr. Bendel, could you do a count to see how many...
All right, we're done.
...actually there?
Thank you. Mr. McDonald and Mr. Semaglia, thank you for the hard work that you and your team do on behalf of veterans in this community and really around the Commonwealth. And thank you, Mr. Bendel, for having that information at your fingertips to retract or offset any misinformation that somehow makes its way into the world. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Thank you, sir. Yeah, inadvertently, gentlemen, I had gone over item number 13 on the agenda because I was so excited to get the public comments. And item number 13 was the proposed dates for our summer schedule. So looking at the calendar, we had tentatively looked at July 17th and August 14th, but certainly wanted to vet that out and see if that would meet with the majority of the board. So looking at your calendars, is there any objections or other suggestions to be made? Seems to work for everybody generally?
If there's an issue, come to the next meeting. Can we discuss it? I really didn't take a look at the calendar. I think it'd be fine.
Yeah, we can, let's, yeah. Unless there's a strong objection or a unanimous or a majority objection, we'll set those dates and if there's a reason for change to be made, we still, we have time to do so.
July 17th is not a problem. My wife's birthday, but I'll be here, not a problem.
We'll bring a cake.
Being nice, man.
New business items not reasonably anticipated by me, the chairman, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. If it's all right, I'll start to my right with Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two things. I'm sure it'll be talked about by my colleagues, but I hope everyone will join us on this coming Saturday for the grand opening of the Yentl Farm. Certainly the committee and the town did a terrific job making a beautiful park for the community and I think it'll be a great celebration, so I look forward to that. I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate one of our residents who, two weeks ago, right after our last meeting, was awarded a well-deserved award. The Pupwana Lifetime Achievement Award went to Ms. Deb Smith, a member of our community who has volunteered her time for over 20 years to Pupwana here. And she's a great example of volunteerism in our community, so I congratulate Deb and her family for all that they've done for Wilmington.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Mr. Karen?
I'd like to echo those comments as well, Mr. Bendel. And it certainly goes without saying, but Lou Shimaya is probably one of the best and hottest workers here for the town of Wilmington and I commend you and congratulate you each and every day for what you do on behalf of the veterans.
Second. That's it? Thank you, Mr. Karen. Yeah?
Yeah, I too think Lou does a great job. I've said it many times. I'd just like to just acknowledge the fact, I saw the manager and I saw several people at the Special Olympics the first time at Wilmington High School. It was really moving. It was fantastic. I had a really good time and I met some nice new people. And it was, it was a really fun, fantastic time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also am really excited for Yentl Farm recreational facility opening, grand opening on Saturday. Please come out and visit us. On another note, the people that have purchased engraved bricks, the majority are going to be installed tomorrow. There are some out there now. I was told earlier today by Paul that they're in force starting tomorrow. So for those who have emailed the committee and asked that question, tomorrow's the day for the engraved bricks. I know a lot of people have been excited to see them, their family name. And I will reiterate what everyone else has said on this board. Lou, you do a phenomenal job. I know that personally from my nephews and friends that are veterans, not only in this town but outside of this town, when you're in, you're in the packages, went to different places all over the world. Lou Semaglia is the best in the business and by far. And I'm sick of hearing the negativity around it. So I hope we can stop that negativity in town. It's not deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. And back over to me. Lou, you've been a colleague and a friend of mine for, I don't know, a long time. And I appreciate that very much. You've been a mentor to me when you were on this board and it's nice to have you in the room again, so it's good to see you, sir. The Yentl Farm recreational facility is May 13th and we're very much looking forward to that grand opening, that formal grand opening. I know many of you are already out there enjoying it. And thank you to all of you who are being mindful of it being a carry-in, carry-out. So keep it neat for the next folks and we look forward to seeing a nice big turnout on Saturday. Mr. Hall, if you will go through important dates, please.
May 12th is the Good Guy Awards Dinner at the Knights of Columbus. May 13th, as was noted, is the Yentl Recreational Facility Open House, 10 to 3. Ribbon cutting at 10. May 20th is the Household Hazardous Waste Day, West Intermediate School Parking Lot, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. May 21st, Pan-Mass Challenge Kids Bike Ride, Carter Lane, 8:00 a.m. to noon. May 22nd is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here, Room 9, at 7:00. May 29th is the Memorial Day Parade, 10:00 a.m. Ceremonies at the Wildwood Cemetery, 11:00 a.m. Town offices are closed. June 2nd, Council for the Arts, 37th Annual Art Exhibition. June 3rd, Friday, 6:30 p.m., 8:30 p.m., Saturday, 1:00 p.m. and to 4:00 p.m. So it's June 1st, 2nd and 3rd. June 3rd is also the Fishing Derby, Town Beach, 9:00 a.m. to noon. June 4th is the Wilmington High School Graduation. June 8th is the Shawshin Tech graduation, townwide yard sale, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Town Beach opens on June 10th. June 11th, the Farmers Market, Town Common Parking Lot is open, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. June 11th is the Hardin Tavern Open House, 4:30 Salem Street, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Chair, if I may. Please. One more thing. Jeff, if you wouldn't mind, it's my understanding there'll be additional parking for this upcoming Saturday's grand opening, Yentl.
Yes.
Perhaps we could describe that to folks?
Yes, so there will be additional parking. One location is adjoining the Yentl Park. It's the lower parking lot behind the Weber Terrace Building, so that area that runs along the fence line there. The second location is next to the tennis courts that Textron owns, so on either side of that. And then the third location is a parking lot just further down Lowell Street, again, part of Textron's parking area. We do have it posted online, so individuals can actually get the exact location.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it up, Greg. With that, unless there's anything else, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion's made.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? unanimous? Thank you very much and good night.